Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for April 4th, 2023. My name is Carrie Martinak, Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I just have a few announcements to read. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on March 29th, 2023. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The act allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with deliberations in the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the livestream this meeting may do so by going to Northboard Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. Confirming that all persons anticipated on the agenda are remotely present, members, and I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Amy Pretzky?
Here.
Bill Pierce?
Here.
Millie Milton?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lori Connors?
Yes, here.
And Fred Litchfield?
Here.
Ground rules for the meeting. Representatives and applicants listed on the agenda. The Chair will invite each speaker or applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Participants will provide their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and to speak clearly in a way that generates accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floors yield to them by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the Board or Committee will be conducted by roll call vote. There are no public comments tonight, and otherwise I would just note that no in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted. Okay, with that, why don't we start with our first item on the agenda? The first item on the agenda tonight is the continued public hearing for 455 Whitney Streets, Site Plan Approval and Special Permit Program on Protection Overly District Bylaw for the proposed addition of 4,500 square feet of warehouse space and associated improvements. Tonight's, there's been a request to continue this public hearing without testimony till April 18th, 2023. And would that be at 6 o'clock, Lori?
Um, it actually are, we have an agenda item at 6 o'clock already, so I would recommend 6:10.
Great. Okay, is there a motion then to continue the hearing for 455 Whitney Streets? Site Plan Approval and Special Permit to April 18th at 6:10 PM?
So moved.
Second? All in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. The hearing has been continued. Next on our agenda, we have the presentation of zoning-related articles for town meetings. I'm going to share my screen here. There we go. Can everybody see my screen? It should say, whoops.
Yep.
The Proposed Planning Later Amendments Articles 37 through 50. Okay, great. And Lori, thank you so much for putting this together. This is, I think I emailed you the nicest that I've ever seen the presentation with beautiful pictures and everything. In terms of this evening for what we need to cover, from your perspective, Lori, is that really just fix figuring out who's covering what? Or do we need to walk through this in any great detail? Or what do you think our requirements are here?
You know, it's up to you. I was interested in hearing if you wind any amendments to the various slides. And also, we do have to provide a report as to who is going to be speaking on the various articles. So those are my two objectives for tonight.
Okay, and I want to clarify something. So in the past, we've been told that the planner cannot present articles, but it sounds like you're understanding if we wanted you to present something, or you wanted to for that matter, that that is okay for the planner to present something at town meeting?
So my experience is that I have not typically presented the articles, but I have been heavily responsible for answering any questions on the articles.
And is that by requirement or just your experience and preference?
Just my experience.
Okay, alright, so maybe that was.
So I know in some communities, they don't allow folks who are not registered voters to speak.
Right.
So you have to sit in a certain location in the auditorium, and you have to request permission to speak. So that's been my experience in the past. So that's why I haven't presented on the articles in the past. But it's, I mean, if it's allowed and you folks want me to present the articles, I'd be happy to do so.
Alright, I'm still not clear on if it's allowed. For some reason, it's never been in the past, but that's okay. I just wasn't sure if you knew something different.
My first couple of years, I think Kathy did present them on the board. I know my first um, cycle, election cycle, I didn't present any.
Okay, well, we can think of it. Maybe it's not even Lori's preference to do it. I know which one I'd give Lori.
I betcha I can guess as well.
Okay, so here we go. So this is Article 37 through 39. Changing definitions. So Lori, you're looking for if there are any changes here?
Yeah, I mean, I thought that I just make it simple. There isn't much to say on these definitions. So, you know, I just wanted to point out that we're just trying to bring them into compliance with the Mass Building Code.
Okay, so this is our logic, obviously, not the actual definition. So board members, when, so in the past, I think we've had, we've shown the actual bylaw change. Have we shown the actual bylaw change in the presentation or no?
Yeah, I think that we've done the, put the strike through and then the word change.
So everybody will obviously have a copy of that in their lap. So is that, is it best then to just stick to the logic, you think? If people can just look at the warrant in their hands?
These make sense, but if, say, whoever's presenting them.
Will just have to have a copy.
Yeah. Either way, who wants to present these though? I guess they would be the ones to decide. Or they all don't have the zoning. I didn't look at them really closely.
So what we've done in the past for presentations, or tried to anyway, is like cluster them together. So that way, we're not like popping up one, then one has to go up. Like, we at least try, it seems to me, to group it by at least two or three unless somebody proposed something they feel strongly about and want to be the one to present it. So.
I guess we don't show the bylaw on any of them, which is fine as long as we have them in our hand. Well, I think we have to read it, right? We read it.
Yeah, we have to read the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be hard to include the entire bylaw in several of them. I mean, some of them are really short, but some of them are long. So I don't know how you would include that on the screen unless you wanted to do multiple slides. But I figured because everybody has that in their hands, it's less important to show the proposed change than it is to show the rationale for the change.
Okay, so that's fine. I just think then if everyone has a copy of the bylaws up with them, and then will you actually type out the motions that we then have to read? So we have to go up, make the motion, get a second, and after it's seconded, we open up for discussion, correct?
I'd be happy to type up the motion.
Okay, so.
I think that might actually be in the book, but I'm not 100% sure. So yeah, I can, regardless.
It is.
That.
It is. The, the motions, I'm sorry, Carrie, it's Fred. The motions generally go after the article is read and the motion is then entered into the minutes. The, who's ever presenting it presents that motion to the moderator and the town clerk, so it goes into the file. There's, you know, that piece of paper that gets handed up to the moderator.
Yeah, so that's why we need to type it out, Lori, because we have to pass it in.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we can sign it too. Yeah, someone to sign them.
Yes.
I think that's only if there's a change. If the motion that's, that's as part of the warrant is there, it's all set, but then if there's a change on the floor, if the Board is doing something, the Board also needs to hand in their vote to recommend approval. I think that needs to be on record that the Board is in favor of it. Usually, there's, he'll ask the various boards that have to weigh in on it.
Okay, and I believe based on what we're presenting, that we were unanimous support across these. Was, is that true? Was there any that we had a split vote? I know the White House, White House, though, White Cliffs, we were going to be a split, or we were a split, but that, if that's not forward now, were we unanimous on the rest of these?
From my recollection, all the others were unanimous.
Okay. Okay, so if we were to, does, does anybody, first of all, let's find out, does anybody feel strongly about presenting a certain bylaw, like one either you advocated for, or just you really feel like you want to present it, or whatever the case? Okay. And now, Bill, this is your very first town meeting presenting bylaws, correct?
Right.
Okay, would you like the treat of picking a section?
I heard that laugh, Amy.
Welcome to the club.
Is there a section that you, first of all, is there anybody who does not want to present? And let's not forget to put Anthony on the hook here too, so. Oh yeah, he's not getting off just because he's not here. Okay.
Would rather not go first, so I can see sort of what everyone else does.
Okay.
There's 14, right? So we divide it by five. Four people would have three, and then the last two are the harder ones that person can have two.
Maybe it'd be easier if you group them by section. So like each of you do three or four. So that you don't have to keep going to the podium and then sitting down and then going up and then sitting down.
Yes, so that's a great idea. So how about 37, 38, 39? So this is a batch of three right here. So does anyone want to do 37, 38, 39? These are easy ones too, if we, are they easy ones? Let's see.
Yeah, those seem like easy ones because they're just getting it up to building code.
Um, so does anyone want either the first batch, or we give it to Anthony, or?
I'll take it. I don't know if anybody had voiced their preference, but I know Bill doesn't want to go first, so.
Okay.
Take some for the team here.
I think you usually do kick us off.
I owe you one.
I think I usually do, so.
This is Millie's traditional kickoff to the zoning.
I think I had to kickoff last year with time.
You did, you definitely did.
Okay.
I think you tried double duty last year because Anthony wasn't there.
That's right, he was supposed to get it off.
That's right, okay. Alright, so next we have, so that's, so no edits to this site. I'm sorry, this page just looks good to everybody. This is, and is this the logic that we used on the public hearing, Lori?
It is.
Okay, great. So we are familiar with it in general. That's great. Okay, so 40, let's go 40, 41, 42, see what we've got here. So this is, oh, fixing up that site plan issue. Oh, is this the rules and regs? Yep, so the site plan, special permit, cleaning, untangling that, the rules and regs, ZBA for ZBA, and what is this?
This is the accessory dwelling size. So instead of going 25% of the single-family structure, it'd be a maximum of 800 square feet.
Okay. Bill, do you like this section, or do you still, or I guess Amy, you could as well?
Yeah, either one. I'll do any section.
Bill, we'll give you the courtesy of picking since it's your first time. Would you like to hold out for a different section?
If I go with Critten B, I'm going to be in trouble, but no.
Alright, let's look ahead, we'll see. Alright, so classification of uses. This one might be a little tricky to tell you the truth. To get people to, this one is going to be confusing maybe to some extent of why the accessory dwelling on an existing is, this one was sticky at the hearing. And by the way, even if you're the one presenting, you don't have to be the only one answering questions, so don't feel stuck. This one might be a little.
I could do those, but maybe Lori can be ready because she did a good description.
I'll be absolutely ready to jump up if there are any follow-up questions. And I know Fred and I were talking earlier today about the complicated groundwater protection by law. Maybe Fred wants to deal with that because he's been interpreting that way historically. But the rest of the questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, and so maybe too, Anthony presents the groundwater one as a groundwater rep. Uh huh. Not, not the big groundwater one, but the one that we're fixing some of the language. Bill, does that, in light of what's in store after this one, do you want to do 40, 41, 42?
Sure.
Okay.
Or if he wanted to do 46, 47, 48, that would be his signed definition, the underground wiring.
Oh, yeah.
Let's go ahead again.
Because those don't seem as hard, the 46, 47, 48.
Okay, Bill, would you prefer that?
Yeah, that works.
Because he brought up the sign, it's just definition, and then 46 is underground wiring, which other towns do. Because I do think 40, 41, and 42 are a little tricky.
Okay, um.
Not the.
Thanks for taking these pictures that are really helpful for people to see. Sometimes I think people get an idea in their head and it's difficult to back away from that once they have it solidified. So that's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, so going back then, for 40, 41, and 42, Amy, do you want to do 43, 44, and 45?
Sure, I can do either ones, whichever one you think. I'll do 43, 44, 45. We're going to give Anthony 40, 41, 42. You know, I'm pegging you for 49 and 50.
I know.
Your grace, your grace under fire.
Well, 50 is easy, so it's only 49 that you're going to have a tough time with.
Um, so.
Maybe not, because Attorney Dineski kind of, you know, clarified some things.
So 40, 41, 42, it doesn't matter to me. Do you have a preference, Amy, of what you'd rather do?
No, and, and I can do either set. We could, could email Anthony, ask him if he wants 40, 41, and 42, or 43, 44, and 45, and I'll take whichever ones he doesn't want. I don't care.
Um.
Whichever one you think I can handle.
Okay, I'm thinking that Anthony would probably want 40, 41, and 42 out of the two because this one would be, 43 looks a little tricky.
I feel like the 43, 44, and 45 are the ones that Lori and Fred are mostly going to talk to. So that's why I thought those looked easier than 40, 41, and 42. But I don't care.
Um, Lori, what do you have to give a report of who's covering what? Is that like?
Well, I was, I was hoping to give it this week.
I mean, the only problem is we're going to get down to the 18th, and we're going to have hearings that night, and then we're going to have to sort it out in public. I don't think we can sort this out. Can Amy and Anthony talk outside of the public hearing and decide if they want to switch this, or does it have to be at the public hearing?
You know, I, this is probably best for me to just be the conduit. So what I can suggest to him is he's been assigned 40, 41, and 42, but if he has a problem with it, then Amy is willing to switch with him.
Okay.
So maybe we do it that way. So then at least I can be sure about the other speakers.
Okay, perfect. So.
33, 44, 45. Because last year I ended up with more because in the end he got sick anyways.
So based on, regardless of speaker, to answer Lori's question, are there any amendments to this presentation? It looks like the same logic we used with the hearing.
Yeah, I didn't really read thoroughly. And maybe after I'll read the ones I'm doing, 43, 44, 45, and if there's a little tweak, I could, I hate to spend time. I should have read it closer.
But now that I'm looking at it at this, on the screen, I like the black slides better than the gray slides. So I'm thinking I'm going to switch the backgrounds to all the slides to black background instead of the gray.
Hmm.
I think it's just shows up much crisper.
Yeah, that'll look nice.
Yeah.
Um, I feel like by putting this table in, and I'm okay with putting it in, but I wonder if it invites questions about the entire table. So we'll just have to be careful of like not going down a rabbit hole with everything else. I'm not sure. Like, I wouldn't want all of a sudden to get all sorts of amendments to start changing other stuff on the floor.
Okay, so you think I should just include the narrative instead of the table?
I'm not sure. What do you guys think? I mean, I guess the same, it's going to be in their book anyway, so theoretically they could do the same thing if it's on the book.
I wouldn't be able to change anything else without having a public hearing about it. So that makes it a simple answer, should that question be asked.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay, well, that's fine. And Bill, you had something there?
No, I was just going to say, it's a bit of an eye chart now, right, with the, the table in there? So, you know, like you said, they'll have the table in the book.
So you're, you think, take it, leave it or take it out?
Taking it out and just leaving the wording. And we can, you know, we can always mention.
We can always. I'm fine with doing that. I'm totally open to whatever your feedback is.
Okay, it looks like you tried to nicely design it, so I hate to.
I always try to make things look pity, but.
It was just a cut and paste job. Don't give her too much credit.
I'm not married to it, so.
Alright, is the Board okay with that? Take it out, or anyone think, leave it?
I don't know. I think it's fine in myself, but it's easier reference, if you ask me.
I'm okay either way, so you guys.
I'm okay either way too.
Bill, you're the deciding factor then.
Yeah, we can leave it in, that's fine.
Okay.
Maybe just highlight what, what the changes to the chart.
Oh, that's a good idea. Yeah.
Okay.
If you just.
Put the numbers in red or something just to highlight the, the one section that's changed.
Yep.
I can do that.
Oh, that's a good idea. Okay. Um. Okay.
And I was going through that one last night, actually, and it's not, even if people get up in arms about it, it's not that big of a, a change because RC is 30%. So on a 20,000 square foot lot, that would mean you could have a 6,000 square foot print, but you can still go up, so that would be 12,000 square feet, right? It's only the square feet on the, on the ground.
Yeah, it's, it's 20,000, yeah, exactly. So you could do a two-story building and have a 12,000 square foot structure. You're, you're correct.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and that's an RC, so. So it isn't really a major change if people might think it is.
Well, that's good because you'll be covering this one, so you can make that.
Right.
Okay. Um, 45. So Fred, you'll be on call for this one when there are questions, if there are questions?
Yep.
Yeah, one of the things Fred and I were talking about, actually, maybe this is what you were about to say, and I interrupted you.
It's okay.
Uh, we were kind of debating amongst ourselves whether we should keep it simple, stupid, or whether we should go into more detail and maybe have a diagram showing what this entails. I was concerned about doing the diagram because I thought it would confuse people more than just the, the language here. But I'm open to your feedback, whether you think a diagram is necessary or not.
I don't know, what do you guys think?
What I used to do in the past is I would have the diagram, say, at the bottom of these slides, and go to it in case of emergency. So like you keep it simple, but then if you get a lot of questions and you need to explain it further, you have your diagram that might help explain it, but if it goes through and nobody questions it, then it's so amazing at town meetings, sometimes like the harder ones is like silence and it goes through, and the easier ones like unravel. But you never know which one's going to unravel.
The tough thing about that is they're going to blend all of our presentations together into a gigantic presentation. So then it won't be like I can skip ahead to this slide.
Actually, I don't think that'll be a problem. I don't think that'll be a problem, Lori. The, the way it's worked in the past is that you give all your slides and your presentation that you want on the screen to David before town meeting, and then he loads it. And then when you get to the podium, there's an icon for each article, and you just click on that article, and then you scroll through the slides as you want to move. If we don't need to use the diagram, we don't have to. And then when the person goes to the next one, they just skip on to the next article and you can go, go right past it. I think we might be able to work that out.
Okay.
But I'm thinking that the, the slide for the diagram is going to be very simple. It's going to be a box with a line in the middle, and it's going to say groundwater one on the back and on the top and on groundwater two on the bottom with an X through it, and then another one with a groundwater two in the back and groundwater one in the front with a big green check mark saying you can do this, but you can't do that in terms of combining the land area for those lots that don't have all the area within the district that the frontage is in.
That seems helpful. Does, do you guys think that's helpful or more confusing?
I do because it's my article, and I'll just call Fred up. And I try to have more than less because I've always had more and then just skip the slides I didn't need. Because it would be hard to describe on the fly when you're standing at the podium if you don't have the diagram.
Well, just remember, we're gonna, someone's going to read the actual motion, and the article is going to be in the warrant, and so people will have that. And then what we're doing is just kind of explaining the background, and, and this one, the background is, we're just trying to make sure the language in the bylaw is clear to the average person the way the, the staff has been interpreting it for years.
Maybe we should put that as a bullet.
Yeah, I did. I, you clarifying language is consistent with longstanding interpretation of the zoning by law.
By staff, maybe. I don't know.
Well.
Or I can just leave it that way.
I think it, I think it's, I think it's good the way it is because Bob is the one who is charged with interpreting the bylaw, and he and I collaborate on stuff that has to do with groundwater. So it's his job to interpret, so it really, I think it's clear that it's staff that's interpreting the bylaw.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Alright, 46. Hope now we're in Bill's territory, so let's see. Anything on these? 47. 48. Anything changed for these slides? These are Bill's.
Pretty simple.
Yep. That's a great picture too.
I stole it from the internet.
You did?
I thought it was very applicable. I'm like, oh, isn't that pretty? And it shows like the five foot on either side, so you have like a nice 10-foot buffer.
Really pretty, okay.
And that was the point of this bylaw, just so Bill knows, he probably knows, is because in design review, we were getting houses that were abutting each other with no buffer, and there was no place to put snow or any sort of buffer, so the houses would be like right up against each other, or the driveways. But that does look really nice, and I do like the black. It does show better.
Mm-hmm. Um, okay. 48, okay, so are these the last two? 49 and 50?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll do 49 and 50. Okay, so um I'll do forty-nine and fifty. Okay, that's fine.
I just checked my warrant from last year, and the motions are printed right onto the article, so.
Okay, great, so it's just a matter of having to pass it in, I guess.
Yep, while you're passing in the vote, well, the vote needs to be turned into, to the town clerk, so. There, you know, the vote from the public hearing about the zoning articles, and then the only time you fill something out and sign it, if there's a change on the floor.
Okay.
I believe.
Wait, okay.
Sign it in the past.
We have to always hand it in.
Yeah.
Only if we made a change, Fred? I think I wrote the instructions down last year, or the year before.
We always handed them to the selectman behind us, and we, we signed them. I don't know why, but that was what we're told to do.
Okay.
So, can I just put them all on a single document? Just hand them in altogether, or do I have to group them in threes?
No, we do it, like each is on an individual piece of paper.
Oh, okay, that's weird.
So Kathy would put three on one piece, though, and then cut it, so it didn't have to be like the full sheet, if you want to put. The three on one sheet, and they're just like a small third of the paper.
I think it, I think it makes it easier for the town clerk when he's sending the package to the attorney general's office after the town meeting. Um, he sends a package for each article, so that the stuff for one article is all together. That way he doesn't have to put one with five motions on it with something else, so he doesn't have to make five copies, I think, I'm guessing.
Okay. Um, I, I wrote down the instructions a couple of years ago that we just keep recycling, so I'll find those and send them to everybody, so you can see. Um, what we've done in the past. The only thing I'd say about this one is it's kind of hard to read, there's a lot there, it's almost easier when it's this big and, and bullets. Versus stuck in these boxes.
Okay, I can change it to the more traditional layout. I just liked how the picture appeared.
And, well, I like the picture, and I like that you did something fancy, but I just, this little part is what I worry people won't be able to read, well, I guess when it's.
Yeah, I'll change that back, no problem.
Oh, I gotta practice this word, I keep, I kept messing it up at the hearing, there are just some words I can't say. Remember I got the horticultural, I can't, still can't say it, the horticultural bylaw? I had to practice saying that forever.
Or you'll do great.
Okay, so that's great, I think that's everything then, um, and I'll send those instructions. So to wrap it up, we have, what's it start with? Uh, Millie is on thirty-seven to thirty-nine, Anthony is forty to forty-two. Amy's forty-three to forty-five, Bill is forty-six to forty-eight, and Carrie is forty-nine and fifty, and that should be a wrap.
Easy peasy, right?
Okay.
We're always last too, it's so late.
I know. The other, let's see, also on the agenda, um, we don't have any A and Rs, law releases or bonds. One thing that's not in the agenda, so I don't know if we can discuss it, if not, um, I, I just want to bring it up as something to talk about next time, is making sure we use our LPA hours. So we have a whole bunch to use, and I just don't know how we want to allocate them, so maybe that's something next time we can talk about. How to allocate them, unless Lori, you have any ideas, I don't know if we can discuss that, I'll keep it on the agenda, but.
Well, you know, just something that often. Like I feel like I can do it on my own, however, if we have LPA hours to burn. Um, subdivision regs desperately need to be updated, they haven't been updated in twenty years. And they are very much behind the times, so um, that's something that possibly they could help us out with.
Okay, so I, I think we have like twenty-four hours, so we have the maximum that we could possibly get, and they expire. At some point, I think we have to stake our claim by June, so we don't have to solve it tonight, but if, if everyone thinks about. It, what, any needs we have um for those hours. I mean, I'm open to the subdivision bylaws, I'm not against that, it doesn't matter to me, nothing comes to mind necessarily.
I was thinking maybe the facade thing for master plan too, but. I don't know when. You use them by, I know we have till June, but then. Is that when you have to allocate when they're gonna be spent, or do they actually have to be used by June? I think June was the date.
Alright, well, we can double check.
Yep.
Um, I don't think I need their help with the, the sign and facade, so I can just uh put that together, that's not a heavy lift for me. So. The heavier lift is definitely the subdivision regs.
I was also thinking maybe something like, if there has to be a public um, community meeting about White Cliffs. Say there needs to be some sort of public meeting before the selectman vote to see what people are thinking. About Metro West. I don't know, just something. Else, but I guess we could talk about it next time.
Okay. Um, alright, so we'll be thinking about that, I'll double check the um. I think I have an outline of when it expires and when we have to use it by. And I know Julianne sent us a note. Okay, um, anything else? So we have master plan implementation committee meeting on May first. Uh, any subcommittee updates?
I can give you a little update, uh, we have scheduled the date of the community meeting number two. Uh, for the downtown revitalization project, that is scheduled for May eleventh at six thirty PM. It's gonna be in the large conference room at the public library, so hoping to get as much of a turnout. Uh, for that event as we have had for the first event. And at that event, uh, we're gonna be talking about the four redevelopment scenarios, so. Should be a, a very interesting meeting.
Okay, and then our next planning board meetings, we have the eighteenth and May second, anything coming up on the second, or is that?
I don't have anything as of yet, um, so. There are a couple of uh projects that are kind of. Uh, just haven't been filed yet, I don't think at this point that they would meet the um. The advertising deadline if they were filed at this point, uh, for the first meeting in May. Um, but they're, they're hanging out there, so I expect them to be filed in time for either the second meeting in May. Or June.
Okay.
Maybe we'll get them, the meeting off after town meeting.
Wonderful.
Unless some of the others are continuing.
And then the next ZBA meeting on the twenty-third, anything exciting for that one?
Uh, ZBA meeting, um, we do anticipate having a filing, it's gonna be a um. A, a filing of a multifamily project. Uh, in the downtown business district that design review has already looked at. Uh, so that's at seventy-eight West Main Street, so I anticipate they will go forward uh at the ZBA meeting the end of May. I haven't filed yet.
Alright, uh, well, with that, unless there is any other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Okay, I'm gonna take Millie's motion, Amy's second, uh, all in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. That's a wrap, thanks, everybody.
Alright, good night.